Okay, we're going in. Okay, could be a roll call, please.
Councilmember Von Breckhorst?
Here.
Hopkins?
Here.
Kitman?
Here.
Blackwell?
Yes, here.
Hope?
Here.
Han?
Here.
Okay, and tonight's indication will be from Reverend Kid Hicks, and then the Pledge of Allegiance led by Kelly Hong.
Let's bow our heads. Gracious heavenly Father, God, we are humbled to be in your presence this evening. God, I ask for your blessing over every decision, every discussion point, every decision made, Lord. God, let this be for your glory. Lord, that you would lead all of these amazing people who have stepped up to sacrifice their time to make decisions for our wonderful community. God, that you would lead their decisions, and God, you would draw them through your spirit to know you and to be ready to represent you in all they do. We praise you, God, for this time, and in your name. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, and one God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much, both of you. Okay. Moving on, or do we have any commission reports?
Always. Design Review Committee met. We were, we reviewed the latest revisement of our documentation from the lawyer regarding the several different capacities and job responsibilities and so forth that the commission will potentially be in charge of. And so I think we sent a few adjustments back to the lawyer of just wording clarification for our sake. And hopefully we'll see it here at the council someday.
It's going to planning and zoning this month.
Oh, that's right. It goes to P and Z first before it comes to us.
Okay. Sounds great.
Obviously. Excuse me.
Appreciate your work.
Yeah, well, it's been fun. Economic Development Meeting. I admit I did not attend that meeting. I was, I had school things going on. However, they met and they are continuing to help Main Street in their projects and then looking for their next big goal. And so they are hoping that you will join us next month. That's our hope, that you will join us.
That's seven o'clock meeting.
No, we changed it to eight.
Change the date, okay.
And it's here.
Okay.
Yeah. Eight o'clock here in our meeting room. We would love you to join us so that we can catch up on all those other things. And council, you're always welcome, but not more than two of you. Otherwise, it's a violation, so. Actually, don't come. Public Facilities, they're doing incredible things. We didn't meet this month, but they continue to make work. So if you haven't driven by the park, I encourage you to go by the park and see the awesome work that Ron and his crew are doing. Fire pits are about to be done. I think it was the update that I was just given, or they are done. They're going to be adding the covering to the women's mothers' corner of the playground area so that that'll be done and ready for the weather change with all its wetness. And I love it. I think it's great. I saw it this weekend, but I haven't seen the latest updates. So we're eager for that. The remaining parts of that that we're waiting on is going to be the expansion of the sidewalk over by the grandstands and the connecting sidewalk as well there so that we can get that to be ADA compliant and then have the connecting sidewalk to our stands. So those are the last kind of parts of the project that we're waiting on. Airport Committee, oh, sorry.
And I wanted for you to know that was funded by the Blue Cross.
Yes, our grant. Blue Cross Foundation grant. We're very grateful for them. Airport Committee also met. So the airport committee is in an interesting spot. They have permits that are coming forward for further expansion, additional units. But we need to have some talk with the fire department, who is asking that we look at whether our system is adequate or not and how we can update it to make it fully safe for any further expansion out at the airport. I'm not sure, I don't, I didn't see it this month, so I don't know if that's something that will come to us later, but they were concerned, and I think they have submitted a recommendation to council, and we'll see that later, later.
I think all we've seen so far is how many gallons they think that would take, but there's no proposal on the table on how to get there.
There is a letter.
There's a letter from Jim regarding the use of a pond that's closer by. And so the city needs to talk with the lawyer regarding what that could look like and if it would be sufficient, yeah. So I'm sure that's to come as well, but we did meet.
Sounds good.
And so, and then the last one is, forgive me if I'm not allowed to talk about it. It's not a commission necessarily, but I was the representative for the City of Weezer at the BSU Community Impact Program. If you don't know what that is, that's a program that President Trump of the US, BSU University, BSU, whatever, BSU. BSU, she, this was her pet project. She created this programming across the state and it's specifically targeted towards rural communities across the state and how we can engage our youth and community members, give them college credits towards an advanced degree if they want. And so they had asked me to be a community partner as representative of the City of Weezer and also as representative of Fruitland School District, which pays the bills. So I said yes to both, and we attended their meeting on April 4th. It was fantastic. I am so grateful that I got to go. It is a program that truly has a broad outreach and is doing a lot for these rural communities. We have three students here from Weezer that are part of that. I think there was another one that just wasn't present. Funny, because they happen to have been employees of mine from when I owned businesses. And so I just have loved getting to see them flourish within this networking capacity and represent Weezer well and bring their hopes and dreams to that community and that programming. So Weezer is well represented, and I just wanted to let you know. And then I'm out of words for the rest of the night, so.
I have a little tiny report as compared to Sturridge's. May I give that back to the library? One of the events that's coming up is Weezer's own Buck Sawyer will be at the library on April 29th to talk about his new book. This is his second book. I haven't read it yet, but everybody says it's really good. And one of the aims of the library board is to get teenagers more involved in the library. So they're going to have a teen takeover night on May 23rd from 8:00 to 10:30, and the kids get to plan the agenda, and there'll be movies and games and all sorts of fun things for them. And book sale during the fiddle week, so keep that in mind. They've got new computers down there that they're all set up, and they've also purchased some DVD players that people can rent, or not rent, but just check out and play DVDs on. And the Lord Foundation is going to sponsor the summer reading program. So the library, as usual, is a happening place, so everybody needs to get down there and check it out.
Great. Yes, libraries do a great, a great job. All of you are very involved. Okay. Are there any committee reports?
Yes, the Safety Committee met with the fire department, and we got a walk through the new fire truck and kind of almost hands-on a little bit. It was pretty neat. We talked a little bit about inventory in the city's fire department and possibly beginning to inventory and see what we have that meets code and maybe start to do a little bit of a clean house cleaning there. We also talked about the budgeting process, and they will be on board as far as presenting budget and the budgeting process. And this is a six-month meeting? What are we scheduled?
Six months until it comes to budget, and then we'll have a few more.
Okay. So, yeah, the new fire truck says Weezer Fire Department on the side. I thought that was kind of exciting, being as we helped pay for it.
Good.
So I just have a report from the historical preservation. So they did receive a grant of $20,000 to start working on their historical preservation plan for the City of Weezer. They were able to kind of piggyback off the Washington County Preservation Plan, so we didn't have to spend as much money. We're just making it a little bit more specific to Weezer. And we are going to be having a social on the 17th at the Train Depot, 5:00. There'll be a light dinner served and then a presentation by Dan from Shippel, and also then some breakout sessions just to see where we are with our goals and objectives for the plan, so.
And the Finance Committee also met. And we had some very preliminary discussions regarding our budget for next year, starting the process for that. And we also talked about the reports that the council gets on a monthly basis. And you can see the first draft of improvement, or what we hope will be an improvement of that. And there's more to come. And Margie has worked very hard and been very cooperative in providing us information about, you know, what can and can't be done. And so far, we've focused in on mainly on our budget and monitoring throughout the year of it and how we're progressing compared to where we felt we'd be. So hopefully, within a month or two, we can get you some better information on a monthly basis to see how we're doing.
Busy month.
Yeah.
Thank you, everyone, for all your hard work. Department reports.
So this is the City of Weezer Department reports for March 2025. The City of Weezer personnel still employs 51 full-time and four part-time. The Weezer Police Department had 28 adult arrests, 21 million misdemeanors, seven million felony. There were two juvenile arrests with two misdemeanors. Citations were 49, misdemeanors 21, infractions 28, calls for service were 383, case reports were 37, felony seven, misdemeanor 21, accident five, and incident one. City of Weezer Animal Control had 19 dog complaints. Six were impounded, six were returned to owners, one was adopted, and one was transferred out. There were four cat complaints, three were impounded. The feral cat TNR program did have one. They transferred out seven, and they had one livestock. City of Weezer Ordnance Complaints, there was one abandoned vehicle, four parking, and there was one bin inspection done. Weezer Wastewater Department March flow for 2020 floor was 28,910,000. March flow for 2025 was 37,240,000, with a March daily average of 1,200,000. The wastewater department cleaned and sprayed weeds at the old biosolid drying beds up at the old dump. The city will start using them to cut down on the amount we have to take to Clay Peak. They hauled 54 tons of biosolids to Clay Peak, and they installed a new air handlers on the belt press and replaced nine bearings. The Water Department, water production for March 2024 was 13,750,000. March of 2025, it was 12,949,000. The Water Department had their ROV inspection of all reservoirs in Clearwell. They installed pump at Billy Creek Fish Pond. They installed new service at 50, oh, sorry, 65 Indian Head Road, and they abandoned a two-inch service at West Third and Washington. The Electric Department's power consumption for February 2024 was 4,704,136 kilowatts. February of 2025 was 5,192,258. They received their F-250s, switched over all the Prue gear. They're continuing with the underground and the subdivision off of West Ninth. Continued meter changeouts, fixed the burnout lights downtown, and helped Matt in the shop replace the main bearing on the wood chipper. The Street Department filled in and leveled the parking spaces at the high school with ground asphalt. They ran the sweeper for seven days. They dug out and flipped for sidewalks and fire pits at Memorial Park. They helped building inspector with the construction of the octagon cupboard area at Memorial Park, and they helped with miscellaneous mechanical work in the shop. The Rec Department has co-ed volleyball as well on its way with seven teams participating this season. They are currently taking registration for youth baseball. Youth soccer is up and running. Youth track is scheduled for the last week of May. Working, they are working with Joe Malley for dates for the youth golf, and they're scheduling dates for the youth cheer camp. The Building Department issued 10 building permits this month. Seven single-family dwelling, one residential garage, one accessory building, one dwelling alteration in addition. Dave did 33 inspections and 11 consoles. Mayor and City Council, that concludes your department report for March 2025.
Okay, thank you. And you all had a chance to look at the minutes to the last meeting?
Yeah, the minutes look to be in order and make a motion that we pass the minutes as presented.
Move the second and all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passed. And has, do you have a chance to look at the bills?
We have, Mayor, and I move that the bill was presented, be authorized to be signed and paid. What a promotion I'm really supposed to make.
Second-class promotion you're supposed to make.
Second, can we have a roll call, please?
Councilmember Han?
Yes.
Von Breckhorst?
Yes.
Hopkins?
Yes.
Hope?
Yes.
Blackwell?
Yes.
Kitman?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Well, there's no unfinished business, so we'll move on to new business. And before we get started, I would like to add something to the agenda, and that's an executive session at the end of our meeting. Would someone be willing to make a motion to that effect?
I'll make a motion that we add an executive session at the end of the meeting.
It's item 12, all second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Okay, thank you. Okay. Number one for new business is public hearing for proposed area of impact. And so we're going to open this up for a public hearing. All of you have had a chance to look at proposed area of impact. Are there any questions that you have? Or wait, I'm getting mad at myself here. Okay. Are there any public comments in favor of the area of impact? The proposed area of impact? And so come forward and identify yourself and your address.
So we vote in the public hearing?
Yes, we're there. Yes, just making sure.
Thank you. Okay. Hearing none. Are there any neutral comments? Going once, going twice? Are there any, is there anyone who would like to make negative comments? Hearing none? The public hearing is closed. Okay, so, do any, does anyone on the council have any questions about the proposed area of impact?
I do, Mayor. I guess I'd like to hear what assumptions and what the basis for this recommendation is. What, number one, who's proposing this to us? And how did they come about with their recommendation?
So I was a little unclear on that myself, so I reached out to the mayor and asked for clarification. I also did reach out to our attorney, so.
Okay. Since this proposal was made by the P and Z, Mr. Stark, would you like to come forward and address that question?
That'll teach you from evidence.
And this actually is a mandate of the legislature, isn't it? Say it again.
You're just gonna have to speak up.
It works.
Okay.
Clarence Stark, 1203 County Road 70 in Weezer, and I'm a member of the Weezer City Planning and Zoning. And the, this originated when the Idaho Legislature, in their 2024 session, made a change to the impact areas for the criteria that the cities needed to have for their impact areas. Just a little background, that in the past, many communities in the state of Idaho essentially took their city limits boundaries and then went out a mile, two miles, whatever arbitrary distance they decided to go out, and that was the impact area. And Weezer did something very similar to that, and they drew an area roughly a mile around the city limits. And, but the legislature said, no, you need to create an impact area that has a realistic likelihood of having development within the next, and I think it's five years, timeline, so that you just don't throw something that's way out there and it won't be till somebody else's lifetime of our grandchildren before something would be developed. So the first step to that was, well, the final step to that is it has to be approved by the county commissioners or the county of Washington. So the starting step was to come to planning and zoning, and it came to us. The timeline for having this completed is the end of December of '25. And if it is not completed by then, and anything accepted by the county commissioners and approved, then the impact area, from what I understand, just disappears and there is none anymore. Won't be any. So it was, I thought the best thing to do is to have a few meetings, brainstorming, subcommittee of P and Z, and see what we can put together. So that's what we did. We chose the areas that we thought were most likely to see development, potential annexation, and we are the first step. We did ours. We're passing this on to City Council. City Council will figure out what steps they want to take. They will pass it on to the county commissioners. And then, of course, I'm sure there'll be another hearing at the county level before all of this happens. And we wanted to get ours done. Actually, I was hoping to have the hearing in March here with the city just because I know how things drag out. And we're already, according to my schedule, a month behind. But I don't know what you guys are going to do, and when you finally work something out, whether it has to come back to us, but when it goes to the county, what they're going to do. But the idea was to have something in place, meeting the timeline of the Idaho Legislature. And I am willing to answer any questions the best I can.
So I will just pipe in real quick. I attended the first meeting and then very quickly decided I have too much on my plate, and I didn't need to add one more meeting, but I appreciate what you guys have done. And I know that the Design Review Committee members were able to provide some input as far as the work that they've been doing to help also back up what some of these choices were of growth. So I thank you for that, because it is reflected well, I think, in where our potential expansion will be for Weezer. So thank you, parents. Appreciate it.
So Clarence, can you, and I realize you'll be trying to remember what people might have said at your meetings. What was the, I guess, were there some criteria used to determine what areas were to be included? Was it based on maybe what we've experienced so far? How did the, you know, the first of all, the subcommittee and then the P and Z determined that this was the right areas to have in our, in our zone?
I'm going to condense that down and say, how did we figure how to pull the rabbit out of the hat?
Yeah, okay.
Pretty much it. Okay. Highway 95 is our commercial corridor, the gateway in and out of our town. Everything along that corridor would be commercial, the distance to be determined after the finalization of how far off you want to go. And there was one other small area that would be changed from, everything else would pretty much be residential, except one small little area over on the west side of town, out closer to the high school, that we thought, let's just throw a little area in there that can be commercial, because the more people that are moving out on a flat, and then people have to come to town, and they have to go all the way across town to get anything, pretty much. And so we just, let's put a little area over there so that if someone decides they do want to put some type of a commercial investment there, it would be just one last step for them to come to go through the planning process. I understand that it'll, I don't know if anything will change as far as, everything will go to city planning, to the city council, and then probably on over the county anyway. But we're just trying to, and we would like to simplify that process, too, somewhere along the line, if possible, to do. But mostly just look at what does the neighborhood look like now? And is it contingent? We don't want to have a subdivision built that is not going to be adjacent to the city limits. That just leads into all kinds of problems down the road. So it was, let's take everything, stay close to the city limits and expand out from there. That way, the subdivision or residential areas can all utilize the city services, and it will be a, I won't say an orderly expansion, but a managed expansion of growth. And that's pretty much the goal, is to offer some reasonable amount of order.
So the assumption that was made is if there was any expansion to the city, would, on the commercial side, it would most likely be adjacent to Highway 95? Is that?
Yes.
Is that correct?
Yes.
And for residential, just wherever it seemed to make sense because of topography and being adjacent to the current city limit?
Yes, the current zoning map and zones in Weezer have much room for improvement. And I'm sure that when things were passed years ago, it all made sense, but times have changed, and changes have not necessarily been made. That's one of the things that we hope to get done. And I won't get into any particulars, it's just that we'd like to have some consistency around the town, so we don't have one little area that's got three different designations that are adjacent to each other, and they're all inside the city limits.
So are there any consequences as far as the area of impact, whether we designate that as commercial or residential?
There shouldn't be, because it would only eliminate one possible step when somebody comes in to develop. If they want to put in a business, and instead of changing it from residential to commercial, it could already be commercial, it's just one less step in the process.
Okay, so it was just the committee's suggestion that, you know, based on their knowledge of the area, that what seemed to be appropriate to be commercial would be zoned that way? And same with residential? Was there, let's see, I didn't notice, was there anything on the industrial, in the industrial zone that's recommended?
No.
Okay.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Oh, you're good.
One other question, so is it, so part of this new laws, is my understanding this was going to, with the new area of impact, was going to simplify the process of if some, if a property owner had, had, in the area of impact, had some kind of request that that, the process wouldn't have to go to the City Planning and Zoning Commission, and then the City Council, and then the County Planning and Zoning, and the County Commissioners? Is that your understanding as well?
It may possibly eliminate that step of coming to us first. And then, if it doesn't need to have any special criteria, then it could go maybe just to the building permit phase, or the, you know, the design review of different committees, but it wouldn't necessarily have to start. Because so many times, we have such a minor thing that requires a zone change, and then if there's a little error on the zone change, that people have to keep coming back all the time, or they, you know, they come. Or they, you know, they come, come to us, they go to you, they go to the county, comes back to us and we, we've all seen those things happen. And it'd be nice to just be able to have things put together so that we can streamline the process.
And is, so is, I also, correct me if I'm wrong here, there's, there's also a process by which we need to come to a, a conclusion with the, with the county to, as to what zoning law, law will, will be appropriate in the, in the area of impact that could be our, our zoning rules? Is that, is that how you understand it as well?
Well, one step here, this process that we're doing, the county has the ultimate final say. We don't know whether they're going to look at that and throw it back and say, start over again or, you know, we only have a certain amount of time in order to get this done. And there are, in my role on planning and zoning, I have found it very confusing at times to understand these overlap or underlap of between what the city of Weezer has authority to do and what the county has authority to do. We think that your, your boundary would end at the city limits, but yet when you're in the impact, you have that say before it goes to the county and then the county can either approve or disapprove. So, and we're not going to, we're not very far away from the city limits on this, which is good. And it also is going to help with our comprehensive plan, which we hope to keep up on that and make changes at least once, possibly twice a year to the comp plan. So that in 10 years go by, we don't have to start from scratch again like we have recently did last year. So right now, we've got some people that are really, would like to do a good job and are willing to put the time in.
Well, that's very much appreciated, appreciated and it's very apparent to, that you're willing to do, put the time in, do a very good job.
Yeah, we're looking for a big raise next year.
I think just the one thing to note for council members that maybe are still somewhat newer, but if you look at the recommended impact area, all of their recommendations are where we have already seen requests for growth or annexation in, for expansion. And so it's just an extension of the places that we already know citizens are wanting to build, where they're wanting to go. And I do appreciate that they took the comp plan into consideration while trying to decide these. They, I know that that was a companion in their choices. So again, thank you for the hard work. We appreciate it.
Welcome.
So Larry, just for clarification, this is one, one step in the process that we still need to decide what the city would like to see in the impact area and get all of those definitions and everything put together. So they've just done a huge portion of the, the legwork to do, to do the mapping portion of it. We'll still need to sit down and...
And do the rules part? Okay. Thank you.
Anything else?
Thank you, Clarence.
I have another obligation, so I'm just going to skip out some of the after questions.
Last bit.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
And since this map is incomplete, it does, this map here, that you have in front of you, doesn't have the newest areas that have been annexed in Weezer. And so we'd like to, rather than adopting this map tonight, like to, to take and have a chance for our zoning committee to, to take a deep dive on this, look at it, come back next month, we'll have the map completed and adopted at that, at that time.
So we can table this until next month?
Yes.
Perfect. Do we need a motion?
Yes.
Yes.
I assume, so make a motion to table the impact action item until our May meeting?
After P and Z has had the opportunity to...
Or after our zoning committee.
Res zoning committee.
Has had a chance to review it and, and full.
I'll second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Next on the agenda is a presentation about the Fourth of July and I understand that Kelly Hahn and Bill Taylor will be presenting.
Oh, you can go one after another.
Yeah, okay. Oh, you don't...
Oh, sure.
Please, first. Kelly Hahn, 2240 Valley View Drive, Weezer, Idaho. Mayor, council members. We met with Jennifer Huff, Tony Emerson, Natasha McDaniel, Herb and I to discuss reviving a little bit that we used to have that went along with the Veterans March on Fourth of July. The Veterans of Forn, FFW is usually putting the march on, they have, that we'd like to help in some way with that also. But also afterwards, the march starts at the depot and ends at the Veterans Park. And from there, after the flag ceremony, we would like to announce that we would move it to the new facility that Ron has worked on so well, and down by the tennis courts. And we will have a barbecue. And so Herb and I have taken on the task of the barbecue this year and we've met with Ridley's. The Lower Foundation is planning on kicking in some money and Ridley's will donate part of the food. And we have a little menu kind of set up. We would also like to have some cornhole contests and pickleball contests there. We're seeing some fun little prizes for that. We haven't decided if we make a little entry fee or not. I think that's still in the works. We were planning on meeting again. We would like some volunteers that maybe know a little bit more about the pickleball to put that together. So if there's anyone out there that would like to put the pickleball contest together and do we have things for the cornhole or do we need someone for that to head that up?
I think it's still all in the works.
It's still in the works. So if someone has a desire to do the cornhole, they could take that over too. I'm sure no one would mind. So is there anything else I missed?
When is the next meeting?
When we said it?
Yeah. That was an inappropriate question.
This is our 2025 fireworks budget for this year. Last year it was 13,800. This year it's the same for the same amount of shots. That was actually over 2,514 shots between both our shows, between our Fourth of July show and our Christmas show. Granted, it's a little bit skewed. Our Fourth of July show are larger shells, less volume. Our Christmas show, we shoot, shoot a lot of cakes, some over 300 shot cakes, they're very small diameter shots, but that's how it all works out. Nothing has changed. We put it in our budget for the same amount. Our major fundraiser right now is our fireworks breakfast. It's going to be six, seven of 25, so June 7th here at the Bend Dome with the help of the Elks, the Help Foundation, I think the Chambers going to help out and we have their committee. And the more people we got to help put on that breakfast, the more we can raise. So I have currently, we've got $1,000 that has been raised this year, I believe. So we got to start. We've got a little ways to go.
So the fireworks must already be bought and paid for and handed out or?
No, it, we got to raise the money. It is in the budget, so I haven't even ordered them yet, but that, I called them and they're not there, raised the price on them for the same amount as last year. So we'll get the order in and then it'll be delivered right before the Fourth and then I'll, we have a place we can store the Christmas, so we don't have to ship them up from Utah for the holiday parade.
So even though they come from China, we feel pretty safe?
Yes. They actually have them in hand already down in Utah and that's why the price isn't going up. The big concern is the tariffs coming up next year and next year is also our 250th anniversary. So there may be a big demand and I know a lot of committees are planning a lot of larger shows, so that's something to think about. The more we raise, the more we can probably purchase the next year or go from there. So if we want.
So Bill, just to clarify, we, we have a line item for the expense of the fireworks, but the assumption is that, that there will be donations or funds raised to offset that, that expense, is that correct?
Yeah. Since 2022, we got actually 17,846 dollars in that year. 2023, we had 10,348. Last year's donations were definitely down a little bit, 9,111. The last three years, the, before the money used to go to the volunteer account and for the fire department, the city fire department and they expended out of it. The last three years have been coming to the city and to the city funds and they wrote the check for the fireworks. So overall, we've raised 37,000 for the last three years, 304, and then we expended 36,800 out of that line. So we're a little bit ahead overall, but we still behind. So and anything to, we need help raising the money because if we can't raise it, we're going to probably have to start cutting things down like holiday parade one or something like that. I do have a breakdown, the holiday parade fireworks show is 2,412 dollars and then the Fourth of July, all the fireworks is 11,388.
Big guns. Fourth of July.
We shoot up to seven inchers, we used to shoot up to eight inchers and then on down to two and a half inch shells.
So it's anticlimactic as this is. What if at Christmas we did an LED fireworks show?
If you had somebody figure out how to do it, I don't know how to do it.
Duh.
I don't know if it'd be a deep breather.
Well, 17 years worth, like, lasted. Okay, just a question.
It's a possibility.
Any other questions?
I think we should, my neighbor down the street in charge of it, he shoots up more fireworks than the city does.
We'll just, we'll just bug everybody.
Careful, Bill's home.
Thank you, Bill.
Thank you very much, Bill.
No problem.
Thank you.
Moving along, next item is to approve the bid for the Memorial Park Hill Curve Gutter and Sidewalk Project. And Mike, would you like to talk?
Yeah. Natasha has secured 29,850 dollars through the Lower Foundation to put the sidewalk at the top of the hill where the bollards were on Memorial Park. On top of that, we looked at extending it all the way down to the sidewalk that's currently behind the greenhouse and attaching those two and making it ADA compliant. As you can see, the bids you have in front of you there, to go forward, we have used 7,945 dollars of the street fund money out of their, out of their project funds to do this. So I am looking for approval to go forward with the granite excavation, the lower bid of 37,9795, which is using the 7,945 out of the street fund to complete it. So 80% of it was donated by the Lower Foundation.
Go ahead, sorry.
It's about 620.
This is twice. You get to know first.
No, no, no. I said I wasn't going to talk at all this meeting. I don't know how to do this.
This is the part that you're getting paid for?
So my question is, that, how was this project selected?
It, it's been needed for quite some time at the top of that hill and it gets rid of the bollards that have been up there forever. Some of them were tipping over. It, it helps secure the water off the road so it's not running over there and causing mud and everything. So it's just a good place for it. It'll help complete the sidewalk around the park and we hope when Indian Head Pathways done this year, we got the funding to do it and finish it out, we could tie that all together and then start around the park.
Okay. So this, this is something that's been kind of on the burner for, for a while and, and just so happens that with Laura here to help and provide the financing, gave us the ability to, to maybe do it.
Then you, I mean, when we get done, at the end of that sidewalk, we'll paint a walkway around the bottom and then when the new fourth street goes in, they'll add curb gutter and sidewalk to that sidewalk, which will help make the sidewalk pretty much continuous around the park at this point, to be able to walk the park on a path or sidewalk. And so further funds come in to finish the sidewalk, but they'll definitely separate that for pedestrian path, for walkability.
Will, will there be an impact on the people that park up on the hill for ball games and stuff?
Not really, no.
They'll stay back of the sidewalk then?
Yeah, so the, the bollards that are up there will be almost right about where the back sidewalk, so it'll be five and a half feet out there to the curb. So they'll still be able to park the way they do, pretty much. Towards the north end, it might be a little tighter, but for the most part, same.
Another question, the, the little bid, just by reading of it, there, it, it seems to have quite a bit of leeway for the contractor to set price subsequent to, to this agreement. I mean...
That's kind of a standard agreement with it, when I was reading it over, they, some of it applies and some does not because that covers a lot of other issues. This is the same contractor that's doing commercials, so they did it by load pricing off the commercial street sidewalk. So I don't have any concerns that it'll be out of that price range at this point. And we've done the prep for it, so it's set up pretty good. Notice we laid the concrete with a machine.
Okay. So is there, I'm trying to remember what I read here. Hold on. Okay. Above pricing is based off of Plan Set Date 1111.
Yeah, I asked him about that. That's just from their, because they use the same thing for everything. That is not correct. That's, yeah.
So that would be corrected?
Yes, I'll get that corrected, yes.
Okay. And, and so you're comfortable that, that we're not going to be sitting here in two months saying, well, we need another 10 grand for this?
No, we've made it very clear to them, this is what we have once this is approved. So I don't have any, any issues with going forward, except for that date change.
Okay. And from what I understand, the reason why they are lowering is because they'll be in town putting in the sidewalks.
Already.
Already.
They'll tie in with sidewalks on town around June.
Okay. Well, that makes sense.
So it's all part of the... So if I can, it says the remaining 7,900 will come out of street department project fund and looking at this fabulous new form that I love, when I look in the street department, I'm just wondering, which one?
79. I don't know what that is.
Yeah, because I, here's my fear. I love this idea. It's fantastic. I feel like we've said yes to a couple of the projects this year already. And so if we take the only one that I'm seeing, like capital expenditure, is that what we're kind of considering projects?
It would be part of the capital expenditure, yes.
Because that, that only has $9,000 left in it.
Yeah, I don't know how that reads. I have to have my sheet.
Okay.
I could...
I, I just look at it and I go, uh huh.
There's like $140,000 in there and what we have project out of there is paint and chip seal so far.
Okay.
Which is probably the 75, 80,000.
Okay.
And some patching and whatnot. Right now, that's, it's set pretty good on that project line.
So we're okay not, so we're not going to miss the 7,000, almost 8,000 and go, oh no, that's what that was for.
And so, is it in...
It's basically about watching that like all of it.
Yeah. Good. Our street department, are they like aware and on board with, with, with this project?
Absolutely.
Taking their money?
Yes. Very aware. So we could, we could use the lower money and do like right at 80%, so like 450 feet of that project, little over 40 feet of that project without going into the extra 8,000. Actually, it's, it's quite a bit further than that. If we take out the ADA's, it'd be like 550 feet of it. This was just connected all together with the extra 8,000. And yes, they're well aware.
Okay. Long as they know.
Just crossing T's and dotting I's and also sort of project locations in Adams County, so just make sure they're aware.
Yeah, I asked him about that and I'm not sure where he got all that, so not... I noticed that Friday, so I should have changed coming back. Yeah, I apologize about those, not getting changed there. He just couldn't give me another set of it before now.
Excellent. So is this an action item we need to?
Yes, yes.
Excellent. Well, Mr. Mayor and Council, I motion that we approve the bid, the lower bid, correct, for our Memorial Park Hill Curve Gutter and Sidewalk Project and authorize Mayor to sign. for our Memorial Park Hill Curve Gutter and Sidewalk Project, and authorize mayor to sign.
I second the motion. It's been moved and seconded. Could we have a roll call, please?
Councilmember Hope?
Yes.
Hopkins?
Yes.
Blackwell?
Yes.
Chipman?
Yes.
Vaughn?
Yes.
Hey, thank you. And we will appreciate it, too.
It will look much nicer when it's done, and we pass back to it.
Perfect, thanks, Mike.
Next item on the agenda is to approve and authorize mayor to sign the J U B agreement. And we have Mr. Toby here this evening to talk about this project. How are you doing?
Great. Toby Epler, J U B engineer, six thirty-three eight East Playwright, Boise, Idaho. Good evening, Mayor, Council. I see a lot of new faces. I usually am up here once a year. Last year, we didn't do an F A project. We had kind of a, an off year, so if I haven't met you guys. My name's Toby Epler. I'm the airport engineer for the city. I've been working out there for almost seventeen years now, so we've done a lot of projects together, a lot of success out there. And this year's project is just another addition to the airport, and mainly is maintaining the pavement we have out there. So mayor, if you don't mind, have some drawings just to kind of give you guys some reference. So just some background information, the city, as a federally funded airport, you guys receive approximately a hundred and fifty thousand dollars a year as part of that process through the F A. And then recently, if you remember, the infrastructure bill that was passed by Congress three years ago, that gave you an additional about a hundred and forty-five thousand. So we've been collecting that three hundred thousand dollars the last couple of years. So the money's banked up for this particular project. If you look at that map, it's, I apologize for the V S U colors, I'm actually a manual, so ignore that. But the project we're looking at there is the one in blue, and that's the parallel taxiway. That's the taxiway that the aircraft use to get to the runway ends to take off. That portion of pavement was built back in ninety-six, so by next year, it'll be thirty years. Typically, F A pavement around here is anywhere from twenty to twenty-five years, so we've got more than our useful life out of it. So it just needs to be removed and repaved. The aggregate section, we believe, is good. So the first step of that project would be to design it through the, to the F A standards, through the process. We would do that this year, and then come back in twenty-six and bid it and instruct it. So this is the first step. So what you have in front of you is an agreement for J U B to do the engineering, design engineering per the F A standards, which is a pretty standard F A agreement, that agreement. Scope works, been approved by the F A, reviewed by the city, and then the price has also been negotiated through an independent fee estimate. So basically, you guys gave it to another engineering firm, they put a price to it, and came back to make sure our price was reasonable. So that's kind of nuts and bolts of the process where we're at. Do you have any questions, concerns, comments?
Is, with the understanding that we need to be looking at fire suppression for future development, do we foresee anything that needs to be, any infrastructure that needs to be laid before we go through with this? Is that something that you guys will consider in the design process?
We will, some, I mean, there's no infrastructure out there as far as utilities go.
Right.
But we are, right now, the taxiway has little blue reflectors to help out tonight. Those will be replaced, as well as the signs, the informational signs to get people the runway. We will spruce up to shoulders, make sure we have positive drainage away from the pavement, that kind of stuff. But we don't anticipate any electrical or plumbing or anything like that as far as infrastructure.
Okay. I just not, when I was talking to Jim, he'd said, if we had to do our massive gallons, it would be at the far end of the property, at the end of the runway, and I was like, no, it's right there. So I don't know if there's.
And we could, we can talk to Jim about that.
I'd be curious, I think it's a consideration we should look at, if we know that the fire department wants us to be looking at sprucing up fire suppression itself.
We'll take a look at the whole grand scheme, make sure it all.
Yeah, thank you.
We're about at the end of our ten-year plan anyway, so we'll be looking at, making up another one, won't we?
We, I talked to Jim a little bit about that today, and that's a, that's a good discussion point that we can have at some point. We did do the master plan ten years ago. As you can see, this drawing actually kind of lays out what's on our capital improvement plan for the F A, and it's mainly maintaining pavement. In fact, that's all it is. It's the parallel taxiway this year, come back in a couple of years and tackle that apron that's starting to see some degradation, and then a crack field seal coat of all the pavement, which we do every five or six years, just to maintain the infrastructure. So mayor, I think we can look at a master plan, but it may be something that maybe after we tackle the pavements, because the master plan will give us direction on growth, but as far as just maintaining the pavements, that's pretty nuts and bolts, and so, but there's some options, some work into whatever you guys want to talk about.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
So I just, since we're taking the federal government's money and if the state's money, this process that we're going through and is being proposed is, is based on their rules?
Yes, sir. Okay. That's why it costs so much.
Yep.
And I will note that the federal funding, been a lot of chaos, as you've seen, and the F A is, has not had its share of chaos as well. So particularly, we deal with the Helena Airport's district office, they handle Idaho and Montana, lot of commotion up there as far as personnel and stuff. So the grants may be delayed a little bit this year. Typically, grants roll out in June or July. They may be later this year, we don't know. But the anticipation was, if you approved this in the grant application, we probably wouldn't start the design until you had the physical grant in hand to make sure we're not putting so much exposure. But the funding's banked, it's just them physically getting you guys the check, but I don't need people to do it. So we're working through that.
Awesome. Thank you. Mayor, I motion that we approve and authorize the mayor to sign the application for the airport design grant.
Second that.
It's been moved and seconded. Do we have a roll call, please?
Councilmember Blackwell?
Yes.
Vaughn?
Yes.
Hope?
Yes.
Vaughn Brathurst?
Yes.
Chipman?
Yes.
Hopkins?
Yes.
I think we need a motion to approve the J U B agreement.
Oh, I'm so sorry. I rescind my previous motion. I got ahead of myself. I motion that we authorize the mayor to sign the J U B agreements for the airport. Can you still second, so I'm so worried. My apologies.
No problem, no problem. So we have a roll call on that.
Councilmember Hopkins?
Yes.
Chipman?
Yes.
Vaughn Brathurst?
Yes.
Vaughn?
Yes.
Hope?
Yes.
Blackwell?
I hope so.
Yep.
Okay, I think we've had a lot of discussion on this already, but approve and authorize the mayor to sign application for airport design grant.
Okay, now I'm ready for this one. I motion that we approve the mayor to sign the application for airport design grant.
I'll second that one.
Second, could we have a roll call, please?
Councilmember Chipman?
Yes.
Blackwell?
Yes.
Vaughn?
Yes.
Hopkins?
Yes.
Vaughn Brathurst?
Yes.
Hope?
Yes.
Okay, thank you, thank you.
Toby, can you help me do that, or can I email them over after you send us email and reply?
Thank you, guys, appreciate it.
Thank you.
Appreciate it, Toby. And everyone, Toby's a big reason why our airport looks as good as everybody does. We haven't ever been out there, or haven't been there recently. We have a lot of reason to have a lot of pride in our airport, so thank you, Toby. Okay, the next item is Los Esmeralda's application for a liquor license. And Chief, would you like to come up and?
Chief, or Mayor City Council, Chief Carl Smith, Weezer Police Department. So Natasha, is this a renew of their license?
No, this is, they, they re-bought the estate.
Okay.
The liquor license.
Since they've become a restaurant, we have had no problems there, so I would recommend city council approve a liquor license for Esmeralda's.
Yeah, this would be in addition to their already beer.
Beer, okay, yeah, yes. We've had no problems there.
Toby, you have any questions?
I would just like to make a motion that we approve Los Esmeralda's application for their liquor license.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Okay, and item number eight, update on the sewer camera purchase. Mr. Mike?
So a few, last city council, you guys approved us to go forward with the hundred and thirty thousand dollars to just purchase one of these and see what we can find used. So far, what we found is an O five F one, or F five fifty camera truck full setup. Problem is, we don't know that the cameras work because they need a computer system to go with it. They took their computer to their new truck, so we have to buy the mapping system to see if the cameras work. They tell us they do. So we made a formal offer of twenty thousand dollars for the rig itself from the city of Pasco, Washington. We did go up and look at it, it is fully outfitted and ready for a camera if this one does not work. It has the water system, generators, desks, the reel is already in it, I mean, it's pretty much ready to go. We, we talked to the manufacturer of that to see what a computer cost, and it'll probably be about two thousand dollars to buy the computer to get up and running that we'd have to have anyway. So we will, if we win the bid on this, we will have the truck that's pre-outfitted, and I mean, it has everything in it already, we still know what works and what don't. However, just the truck has sixty-five thousand miles on it, it's worth, the outfit is worth what we're paying for just that, if the cameras don't. If the cameras don't work, we would have to, you know, purchase a camera to go with it, but we would be well under what we, we budgeted for. So it's, it's looking really good, it's a nice truck. It's in good shape.
Sounds good.
Yeah, it's full drive worthy and everything to come back. We sent a couple guys up to look at it and see what it was.
So are we still good with what we have authorized?
Yes, and I'll know more about the camera once we get back here and get the computer for it, hook it up, and see what runs. It actually comes with three cameras, so I can't imagine all of them not working. And the reel, the reel is the big, the expensive part, where it has the camera reel on it already, which is the cable that runs down the sewer. So it's got a six hundred foot reel with it already. Beautiful.
So you would think the city of Pasco, if they told, told us that it was working, that probably is.
Probably is, but that's another reason we put the bid in lower, is because we couldn't tell if it worked. And they, the gentleman, their purchasing agent over there was happy with that bid, they'd like to sell it to another city. So we'll find out when they have their council meeting.
Is six hundred feet long enough for any of the pipes that we'd like to scope and cameras?
Absolutely, I think most of ours are five hundred feet and less, so that's a pretty, that's a pretty good run. If not, you go to the other one and come back, and it counts where it's at, so.
Awesome, thank you.
So that's our update. No action item on that. Next is to approve ordinance one two seven two, animal shelter as permitted, as a permitted use in the industrial zone.
I'll just go ahead and read the ordinance.
Yes, please.
So Weezer City Ordinance Number twelve seventy-two, and Ordinance of the City of Weezer, Washington County, Idaho, amending Title Ten, zoning regulations. Weezer City Code, Chapter seventeen D, Industrial District, Section ten seventeen one, uses permitted, providing that animal shelters be a permitted use in the D Industrial District, and providing that the ordinance be effective upon its passage, approval, and publication according to law. Be it ordained by the mayor and city council of the city of Weezer, Idaho, that Weezer City Code, Title Ten, Chapter seventeen, Section ten dash seventeen dash one, be amended to read in its entirety as follows. Section one, bear with me. That Title Ten, Chapter seventeen, Section ten dash seventeen dash one, Weezer City Code is hereby amended to read in its entirety as follows. Ten dash seventeen dash one, uses permitted. A, industrial uses of all types which require both building and open areas for manufacturing, fabrication, processing, extraction, heavy repairing, dismantling, storage, or disposal of equipment, raw materials, manufactured products, or waste, and provided the use conforms to the following performance standards. One, smoke, no smoke is emitted of a density greater than number one according to the Regulament Scale, except, except that smoke of a density not to excess of number two of Regulament Scale shall be permitted for a period not in excess of ten minutes in any hour.
Six minutes.
Six minutes. Fly, I said, bear with me. Fly ash, no particles from any flue or smokestacks shall exceed two tenths per cubic foot of the blue gas at a smoke temperature of five hundred degrees Fahrenheit. Dust, no dust of any product, products produced by the industrial operations shall be permitted to escape beyond the confines of the building in which it is produced. Odor, no noxious odor of any kind shall be permitted to extend beyond the law lines. Gases and fumes, no gases or fumes toxic to persons or injurious to property shall be permitted to escape beyond the building in which they occur. Vibration, no intense earth-shaking vibration shall be created or maintained by any industrial beyond the boundary lines of the track on which it is located. Noise and sound, a maximum of seventy decimals at the property line is permitted. Noise is required to be muffled so as not to become objectionable due to intermittence, beat frequency, or swirledness. Sound may equal but not exceed street traffic noise in the vicinity during a normal shift work period. Livestock, raising of cattle and livestock so long as commercial feeding is not conducted or conditions do not exceed, exist which would cause offensive or undesirable odor or conditions which amount to be a nuisance. B, feed and fuel stores, lumber yards, machine shops, and trailer courts are specifically permitted in industrial districts. C, animal shelters, so long as there is not another animal shelter within a five-mile radius, a facility operated by a human, humane society or other nonprofit organization for the purpose of sheltering, caring for, and finding homes for lost, stray, abandoned, and surrendered animals. An animal shelter may provide veterinary care, spaying and neutering services, and adoption programs, but not, but does not include private kennels, pet stores, or animal breeding facilities. D, uses permitted in C Commercial District, except dwellings or dwelling units unless they are allowed as a conditional use. E, uses customarily incidental to any of the above named uses and accessory buildings when located on the same lot. F, conditional uses.
You can worry about it.
In Chapter eighteen of this title, Ordinance one one eight four, twelve dash twelve dash two thousand and five. Section two, all previous ordinances, resolutions, order, or parts thereof in conflict wherein are hereby repealed, rescinded, and annulled. Section three, if any part of this ordinance shall be held unconstitutional or void, such part shall be deemed severable and is invalidated, shall not affect the remaining parts of this ordinance. Section four, the city clerk instructed to immediately forward this ordinance to the codifier of the official municipal code for proper revision of the code. Section five, this ordinance or a summary thereof in compliance with Section fifty dash nine oh one A Idaho Code shall be published once for the official newspaper of the city, and shall take effect and be in force upon its passage, approval, and publication.
Thank you. Can I make the motion that we suspend the rules and pass ordinance twelve seventy-two onto a third and final reading by title only?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to move it on to title only and.
For Natasha's sake.
Weezer City Ordinance Number twelve seventy-two, and Ordinance of the city.
We have to pass that motion. Just all in favor?
Aye.
Did you second it?
I did, but, but just one, just some discussion, didn't we pass this already?
No, there was revisions that needed made to it.
And what were those? What's different about it?
The revision was in the actual C, animal shelter, so long as there is not another animal shelter within a five-mile radius. Previously, it said a facility.
Operated by government.
Operated by a government agency.
So just the wording in that section?
Yep. So technically, the title has been read at a previous date. Now it's been read in full, so it can be read by title only.
Okay, and that section C is the only thing that's actually changing. Okay, and, um, that section C is the only thing that's actually changing to our ordinance.
So the only thing that is changing from the ordinance is C, defined the animal shelter as permitted use. In that being C, it changed D, E, and F, just in their...
Numbering.
Numbering.
Okay. Sorry.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. Could we have a roll call, please? Or not a roll call, uh, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
Weiser City Ordinance Number 1272, an ordinance of the city of Weiser, Washington County, Idaho, amending Title X zoning regulations. Weiser City Code, Chapter 17D Industrial District, Sections 10-17-1, uses permitted, providing animal shelters be a permitted use in the D Industrial District, and providing that the ordinance be effective upon its passage, approval, and publication according to law.
Mr. Mayor, I motion that we approve ordinance 1272, the animal shelter as permitted use in the industrial zone.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded.
I'm just having to remove my glasses.
We have a roll call, please?
Councilmember Von Breuer?
Yes.
Hope?
Yes.
Chipman?
Yes.
Blackwell?
Yes.
Hopkins?
Yes.
Hahn?
Yes.
Okay, thank you for passing that. And next item is to approve bid for the AC unit on the police department. Would you like to talk about that, Mike?
Yes, so I apologize. I didn't have the bid amount in front of me. What we did was, is, uh, we do have a quote, we have another one coming, but this one, uh, I don't want to have to wait. Something that was less, we would use it also. And as long as it's the same, apples to apples, you know, for, for quality and everything. So I would like to do this, but I'd like to be able to use the leftover funds that were we budgeted for the capital maintenance on top of that, because there's leftover funds from the library roof and the generator out back. That's how we would pay for it. So if we approve it to go forward to replace the AC unit, which is AC and heating unit combination is why it's so expensive. If we go forward to replace it, I'd like to take it out of the capital maintenance fund. Use the leftover budgeted money and get out of the capital maintenance fund.
I mean, I guess they should stay cool. I don't know. Mike, can we talk about it?
Yes, well, you want to come up and explain it?
Is our prison included in this?
He can tell you more of why it was out on it. I just have to...
So our current police department was built in the nineties. At that time, there's, on our roof, there's two HVAC units. And we do yearly maintenance on them. Comfort Zone does the yearly maintenance. This spring, they did maintenance. The one unit's still working fine. The second unit, the compressor went out for the AC part of that. So currently, I mean, we haven't really needed the AC yet, but we're gonna need it shortly. So we would be able to heat and cool half the police department, well, actually heat the whole police department, but only cool half of it. So that other unit, they're roughly 30 years old. So that would probably tax that other unit, and it would probably go out pretty quick, too, so... Obviously, we did not budget for this. We didn't expect this to happen, but... So probably the other one's gonna fail shortly as well, but it's still currently working, but we do need to replace the one unit. We did, I had Comfort Zone look for used compressors, rebuilt compressors, but the unit is so old, they cannot find one anywhere, so...
Refrigeration has changed.
Yeah, it has, too.
So Chief, is this just for the replacement of...
One?
One of the units?
One of the two units, yes.
Okay, does it make, does it make sense to replace both of them while we're doing it, or... Or the other one's 30 years old?
I can't speak to the funding on that, Mike.
We don't have the budget to do it as it is. I have to, like I said, that's why I have to use the leftover, the capital maintenance fund.
So it might make sense, but we don't have any money?
For the upcoming budget, we would probably budget for it for next year, so...
Okay.
Hopefully, we get through, so... Make it to October, please. Hopefully. Helen Detective's office, he'll love that. Just for reference, I think the Sheriff's Department has roughly 12 units on top of the Sheriff's Department, and they've been replacing all of theirs as well, so...
Okay.
Any other questions?
Well, it's too hot in the summer around here to not have air conditioning.
Especially with my guys wearing bulletproof vests. They get a little hot, so... Thank you.
Okay, I'll make a motion that we approve the bid for the AC unit on the police department.
Using leftover capital.
Using leftover capital.
Funds for maintenance.
Sorry. Sorry, I'm not trying to...
I'll second that.
It's been moved and seconded. Could we have a roll call, please?
Councilmember Hahn?
Yes.
Hope?
Yes.
Blackwell?
Yes.
Hopkins?
Yes.
Chipman?
Yes.
Von Breuer?
Yes.
And then...
I'm not sure whether it's Executive Session, really.
Need a motion to move into Executive Session?
If somebody has a paper up here that can read why we're going in Executive Session.
Yes.
It's to discuss...
There's a certain code.
Yeah.
It's not over here. Is it on that page?
We can just say possible litigation.
Oh, I motion that we move to Executive Session to discuss possible litigation.
Second that.
We have a roll call, please?
Councilmember Hope?
Yes.
Von Breuer?
Yes.
Hopkins?
Yes.
Hahn?
Yes.
Blackwell?
Yes.
Chipman?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. And thank you, everyone, for coming tonight.